Now we got the words up there. So let's just take a slice at a couple of these. Let's look at sigma. Sigma and you see the word sigma and you see the sigma sigma symbol. And of course, that stands for standard deviation in lean six sigma as well as an I tells we're taking a look at measuring our processes, understanding how effective we are. We're going to use statistics and standard deviation is a calculation that will help us evaluate. Used commonly. And then you see in there six sigma is six sigma. Well, six sigma is the goal. And if you look at a process and let's say that we are throughputting. I often use the idea of making a metal pin. So if I'm making a metal pin, what do I care about that metal pin? How about this? I want to make sure that metal pin is the right diameter. So as I pin things together, it doesn't just fall through. And also, it doesn't just get stuck. So I need, it's going to have to fit within a certain range. So what I would do is I would sample these metal pins and then I would plot them on a curve typically. That's going to be a normal curve normally distributed. And what I want to have is six standard deviations off from the center to the nearest specification total of well, I'm going to account for 12 standard deviations in there. And that's going to help me understand how high my quality is. And so high quality has a higher sigma number six sigma, for example. A low quality process has a lower quality number like a one sigma. And if we look at quick example airlines, people make fun of airlines, but think about it. You know, when airline goes down, something happens, you know, often it's going to be a human issue, not the system itself, not the mechanics, not the electronics. Those operated six sigma, they very, very, very seldom go down. And that's why it's news now. So it's the airlines themselves, the planes themselves, the service itself runs at six sigma. The airline luggage runs at three. How often do they lose luggage? There are warehouses full of luggage. Okay, kind of gives you a quick look at that idea. And then you see the idea of continual improvement, really, really important, kind of burn in on that, if you will. We live in a very, very competitive age. And so if you are not improving, you are standing still. If you are standing still, you are falling behind. It's, it sounds like a large statement, it's not. And let's go ahead and push on. I'm going to hit some more of these words, feel free, come back, talk to me about any of the terminology that I use. It's good move on. Okay, so why use ITIL or lean six sigma? I tell us for I IT environment. So it's kind of a specialized lean six sigma is for process product improvement. And that can be correcting a problem or just making things better. So value to the clients, that's the big thing. Let's start with that. The idea is this, how many of your clients, how many of anybody's clients want to be the testers? Where you send them a product, it doesn't get there on time, it doesn't work, the instructions don't work. Something is wrong with, we don't want that to happen. What we want is we want high quality products been out there in all aspects, so we could satisfy customers. Where income comes from and then what do we get from satisfied customers? We get loyalty, so it's much easier to retain a customer than it is to go get new ones. And in fact, what we want to do is yes, we still want to go off there and get new customers. But let's keep the ones who have, and by the way, a lot of referrals come from satisfied customers. With satisfied customers, repeat business, and you're also going to get new business from that. Also, our goals are process production efficiencies, read that as dollars. If things cost you less to do, less to make, less fixing defects, rework, taking extra time to, to fix little things as they're going wrong, that's costing you money. So we can reduce that. That's going to leave more profits in your businesses pockets or in your organization's pockets. Now, what about a value to project managers? These are great tools recognized around the world. So I'm going to say best of class toolsets. And yeah, there's some overlap, that's okay. But there's also distinction, so you kind of, you can choose this side, I tell Lindsay signal or better yet, do them together. And what I would suggest is having these tools in your quiver gives is going to give you more opportunities. Part of it's because there's going to be, and we're seeing this already, increasing requirements for people to be I till trained lean six sigma trained in order to come into a particular area. The other thing is, as the culture, as the organizations become more attuned to I totally six sigma, they're going to be more open to addressing improvements in other areas within their, within their environment. And of course, whatever we made an improvement on, we likely can do another cycle, get another iteration of that. And perhaps gain some additional some, let's say we did a 4% improvement, do another 4% improvement on top of that down the road. And it's an ongoing benefit to the organization. And then, of course, the idea of competition. And everybody is in competition. We're, we're in a global market, I'm sure everyone knows that. So what do they have in common? Okay, and again, let's bring it back to our focus, our focus, project management. In order to get the work done, we have to have the information, data based analysis, cost and testations. Both are both I tell lean six sigma are the support really focused on, we want to get in and make the improvements, keep them sustained and keeping and improve other areas that will be beneficial to support what we're trying to do as an organization. And even improve the areas that we've already improved. And that takes quite often a culture change required by more clients. I already talked about that remote focus on quality. Again, we live in a competitive world. I tell and lean six sigma are effective, effective methodologies, effective disciplines, but they require the discipline of project management. And a lot of times, people go at these efforts and they really don't know how to run projects. They don't know how to define a project, they don't know how to communicate effectively. So, so let's take that skill set of project management, project management professional, for example. And apply that, you can see that there's consequences for this lack of project management expertise in particular areas. So up to this is up to 60%. And, and, and whether that number is 60% or 50% or 40%, it's still a lot of failures. And so we end up with people that go, I tried, didn't work, and I tried six segment didn't work. Or I tried getting good health, didn't work. Okay, I'm going to say it's really probably a project management issue. Okay, so you can see some of the things that could contribute to that. Now the bottom one is, is the, is the one that I really hate the most is once you've done the work, once we've got the new idea, the new improvement in place, and everybody has seen this. We don't sustain it. Oh, and so it becomes, and then we develop a cynical attitude. Okay, what's the improvement this week? What's the improvement this year? And then we'll get back to what we really do. Basically, I'm going to recommend come on in, come on into our classes. We'll provide you the key language, we'll provide you the concepts. We, you can see I talk pretty fast, but give you the lecture with interaction. We love questions. I have a particular skill set and experience base. And let's take that and, and see how that can apply to your area or other class members. And let's turn it into a workshop environment if we can. So love the interaction. New Horizons instructors bring real world experience. I've done a bunch of stuff, Jesse key, give you kind of a taste of that. So, and in fact, more stuff than I told him about. We teach our classes in a compact timeframe. So save time, we'll get you the ideas, we'll help support you to get the certifications. And okay. That's what I was looking for. So as a project manager, PMP through PMI, PDUs might be of interest. And so just to let you know that in those two programs where there are PDUs that will help you support that, that other certification could be good. All right, so let's start off with the idea of I tell, I took a ride off of a I don't remember, I think it was axles. They're the, they're the producers by tell, recognize best practice, not a standard. In fact, what I'd like to say is it is a set of great ideas, great propositions as to how we can best serve our I tell our IT clients. And so I talk about IT services. Used to be back in the old days, we go, hey, I'm going to bring up an email system, you've got communications, got it. Not efficient, never was sufficient, let's just say that. What you really want to do is you want to bring up a service, a communication service that is going to answer the needs of your client. And I'm going to say that one size fits all idea, not so good. Now, if you take a look at what we need to do in communications, take a look at our environment right here. That's simple, out of the box solution doesn't work. So focus, what we want to do is we want to do what's called supporting business outcomes. What's really important to the business? And that's also going to be important to their customers. And that is going to allow the business to, to have income, let's say that. And the idea of co-creating value back in the old days, we'd say IT delivers, we deliver services. And what you end up with is you end up with a situation of unlimited demand. And it's the squeaky wheel that gets the grease, they're not as well thought out, there's not as rational management of IT assets. And consequently, squeaky wheel gets the grease, a lot of focus there. But that may not be the critical client need or the critical strategic need. And, and also the idea of co-creating value with clients, think of it this way. If you want to have a great job, let's say you want to have great health. How do you get great health? Well, you go to the doctor, you know, get a checkup, do what they tell you. But I'm going to suggest it's even more than that, you need to be educated as a consumer. And you need to go in there and be able to work with that medical establishment and communicate where you're at, where you want to be, and then be able to work with them, take in their information, ask questions. And so you really need to do it in a partnership, you do it that way, you're going to be informed client, you're going to get better results. The same thing with our service clients. So as I work with or have worked with, let's say, our accounting function, our housing management function. Then what I need to know is what is it they really need to deliver? And what can I produce that will support that continual improvement? So we wanted to, we want to develop a culture of continual improvement. Everyone is always thinking, how can we make this better? Everyone is realizing what I do impacts our, our outcomes. And by having that intimate relationship, it's going to help propel us into a better competitive state. And then down the road for I tell, what else can we offer? Uh, conditions change, and I like to talk about businesses that failed blockbuster. Why did they fail? Not going to go into a big study, but they failed to meet the need. The market had changed, they just failed to meet the need. They were the top dog, doing what they were doing at the time, but they're gone dead, they just failed to meet it. Over on the right hand side, you see a graphic and it reminds me and gives me a chance to tell you that as consumers, our clients choose services that they have to take on an analysis of costs. How much is a service going to cost? How much the service, how does the service remove cost? And also the idea of risk and what risks are imposed with that service and what risks are removed if you use that service? And of course, what we want to do is as we architect the service and provide the service, we want to provide it at a more attractive cost and more attractive risk element. So a couple of stories and I've had people, you know, some people just jump into I tell. I've had some folks that came in and they were drag kicking and screaming into my environment, into this, into this class. So I'm originally from San Diego, so when I got to do that particular class, the one up on top, it was great, it was kind of like going home. In fact, I met a former coworker and we hadn't seen each other for quite a number of years. So what I, what I got was allowed, this will never work, this is a waste of time. We already know how to do our jobs. This particular group managed critical communications, the kind that could stop wars or start wars. They didn't say that, that's just what I understood. And, and they, and they also said, listen, you know, we're in the military or we work with the military, we've got an established hierarchy. The Admiral says jump, you don't even quite you jump. Right, I get that. And then we talked about how efficient that was. And then we talked about how well they were meeting their needs. And we started discussing some of the resource allocation. And they weren't able to make changes because they didn't know how to justify their changes. At the end of the classes, the three day class, this is a foundation class version three. The guy that had been the loudest critic became the largest supporter. This could work, it was like wow. And it was literally at the last hour of the day. Also caught a marine communication platoon. What is there, let me cover a unit coin at the end of the, at the end of the training, same kind of thing. Very disciplined, very disciplined people, very serious people. And they came in and they also let me know, I don't know what we're going to get out of this, you know. Our job is making sure the troops get the information, can communicate effectively so they can carry out their missions and also importantly, save lives. And so, all right. Let's go ahead and give you the ideas, give you the concepts. At the end of it, they thanked me profusely and provide and awarded me a unit coin, which for me was a great honor. At the end of the day, they were very, very pleased, they, this had started doing a brainstorm. How can they re-architect their, 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 I want to say implementation, sorry, civilian world? Then how could they put in place their communication equipment, their networks? How could they keep their, how could they, they document how well things are being utilized? And how well it's supporting their missions? And I tell will help them do that. Again, another company in San Diego, I just realized all these are San Diego. I guess it's because, well, I guess I was in a San Diego mood as I wrote this. It's a biotech company in San Diego, is that exactly golden triangle someplace? Anyway, they had been acquired by a company in Europe. I tell got started in Europe and so now their new parent company was requiring that they come up to speed. Now, these guys are really sharp. And so I got peppered, I got shot, blasted, challenged on, on all the ideas, all the components, all the interaction. And at the end of the day, 21 people in the class, 20 people passed the exam. We had set up, set up so they can take the exam while we're all on site. And of those 20 people that passed, well, by the way, the guy that didn't pass missed it by one. And he just felt horrible. And so they were going to arrange to have him, you know, and he knew exactly which question it was. But of the 20 that passed, 10 got perfect scores. One of my best classes, when I came out of there and they were, they were just thrilled. Again, brainstorming session, this is how they're going to get a better grip on their IT activities or IT priorities. One of the things in IT is we end up providing a lot of services. And it turns out most IT groups have no idea, are very, very limited ideas to what services are actually provided and what level they need to be provided. When I say at what level, level of quality and also level of commitment or resources, so it gets to be very expensive. So here's the idea of services. Back in the old days, it was just infrastructure and let me put it, let me put exchange on, on the network. Let me give you Microsoft Office. And then, and then the work began and this group has this need and that group has that need. No, no, before we, we put that service into place, let's talk about the idea of a financial management service. What are we actually going to produce in IT? Well, we're going to install some software, they're going to produce some screens, people can be able to do input, run reports, transfer money around. And what we're going to do is we're going to set that up so that we score how well we're doing based on SLA service level agreement. And that score is intended to reflect what they're really trying to do. So let's see business outcomes and the idea is we're, we're going to produce these outputs, screens, reports, transfers, other stuff. And what it's going to turn into is your timely billing, accurate elections, a thorough understanding of their cash standing. Now, if all of those are working well, think about it from your client standpoint. Yeah, I got a bill from Chris's company, the bill is accurate. Hey, I got a bill from Chris's company, I don't understand, let me call up and get an explanation. Oh, okay, I get it. So let's be able to effectively build effectively collect. And what do we get from that? The result is happy customers. Same thing, if we have a patient scheduling service, we're going to present some screens, some communication capability, we're going to do some calendaring. And of course, we're going to have some databases to support. So those are going to be our outputs. And of course, those will be measured by that SLA. So what does it actually turn into? What it turns into is they're going to be able to work with a medical office. The reason I use this one, recent, recent experience. They're going to be able to work with the medical office, make sure the doctors at the right place at the right time. Make sure the hospitals are ready with the correct facilities. Make sure that the supporting medical specialists are there at the right time. So we can do efficient scheduling. You know what I mean, but by efficient scheduling from a business standpoint, that doctor is valuable, but only if they're seeing patients. Patients to evaluate their needs, patients to work toward fulfilling their needs. And if we lose opportunities for doctors to be in front of patients effectively, then we lose income and the doctors lose income. So we could lose both patients and we could lose clients as well. So what do we want? We want happy patients. Okay. And I'll be happy to go back to that as we go forward, but want to get, I want to get to the idea of we're really focused even at the service level, which was not the traditional approach at the service level. What are the outcomes? How well are we doing? So part of our metrics is actually understanding the metrics of the people that front face the customer. So how do we do this? And another graphic right out of the class and you see, oh, organizations, information technology. This is called a holistic view. As we create services and as we operate services, we understand services, we always want to take into account the whole world that they operate in. And what you see at the core of that is the idea of value. Let's go over to the left side. And one of the things about I till four, they brought out what's called guiding principles. And guiding principle says focus first one, focus on value, which means we don't put a feature in. We don't make a change unless it has some value, we don't do something unless that has some thought. And we understand what that value is. And typically, that value is going to need to be quantified. I'm not going to say all of them are, some of them are preference. And sometimes we can't quantify it because it's really building a competitive edge or it's building for a future capability, we can't cash in on, we can't get an idea. But we want to focus on value and have that promulgated throughout our organization. The idea of start where you are, if we're going to make a change, we have the freedom to throw everything out. But before you do that, that can be a huge waste. Before you do that, let's examine what can be retrieved, what can be reused before we throw everything out. And not going to cover the rest of them, but well, that one think and work holistically. 18 folks can be very, very, very focused. You need, you know, folks that work on servers that do, that do computer security, sorry, lost the word there for a moment, can get very, very focused, those can be very complex areas. So we always have to remind ourselves, let's make sure that what we're doing really works in the real world. So how about some quick exam questions? So what are the four dimensions? That was that little map. People, organizations they belong to, that's going to tell us about the culture, that's going to tell us for our competencies, it's going to tell us a lot about what's going to work within that environment. And quite frankly, one of the questions, do we outsource the service? And then the information technology, what technology we're using, how does it mesh together? And we look at information to levels. One is maybe it's the financial or maybe it's housing or maybe it's communications related. So that kind of information to provide that, that service or those services. And also the information, how was the service running? So we build that into our services, so we get feedback, how well are we doing? Value streams is the steps that we do, how we do our work. And then partners and suppliers, no man is an island. And so it turns out, most companies don't provide their own internet bandwidth, don't provide their own power, water, solutions, what do you do, the building burns down? Or maybe there's some level, some expertise, so we reach out to the world. And by the way, all those other services need to mesh in to meet the needs of the organization. Okay, which practices support now practice. Okay, got to define that. Practice defined here is the shortcut definition is organizational resources. So if I have a service desk practice, that means I've got seats, I got desks, I've got monitors connected to databases so that when calls come in, and also I've got trained staff, these people can answer questions. These people can provide directions, can walk you through an Excel sheet, help you navigate the financial system, can take in the trouble tickets as they need to do it. So, so we have three levels of client relationship, strategic relationship management, typical service level management and user level service desk. And we use those three levels because it's three categories of communications. I need to have people, I technical people with business heads to help mesh, make sure that we're on practice with the organization. We've made agreements with our, our purchasers, our customers, department heads, let's say, as to what the financial service is going to do. And we need to be reporting back to them. And oh, by the way, oh, creating value, there's things they need to provide back. So we have regular meetings and the, the key opinion ideas are we're going to be bringing quantified information about that. And of course, service desk is the everyday users calling in, needing assistance or requesting service actions or. So those are the three, relationship management, service level management, service desk. Whereas continual improvement embedded three places. We have the continual improvement model eight steps, continual improvement practice, organizational resources and the improve activity. So let's say that a service call comes in and we're having problems with our email service, something simple. And so we want to look at, how did we handle that? Is there anything we could have done better? Did it meet expectations? So we're going to look for opportunities for improvement. But the other thing we're going to do is we're going to look for opportunities. How can we prevent that negative experience or that malfunction from occurring? Okay, a lot of, lot of concepts in there. All right, let's talk about lean six sigma, lean six sigma, recognize set of tools, similar. Comes from two areas down at the bottom says lean and six sigma. So I'm going to talk about each one and bring them together again. To make is the process that comes from six sigma. And I'm going to define that in just a moment. So I want you to realize that lean started off as a manufacturing idea. And six sigma also started off as a manufacturing idea. In fact, I still get pushed back. Oh, this, this only works on products. No, it works on everything, folks. We do a lot of services and a lot of services can be streamlined. So we in six sigma got to work in Minnesota and did several kinds of training. You can see lean six sigma, green belt, lean six sigma, black belt levels. They've been in operation for a hundred years, basically family operation and the, the headquarters, which is where I was mostly working. Their tenure there is about 20 years in the manufacturing. After the first time I went there, the tenure was about two and a half years. Different environment, okay. So a little more story. They basically make lenses for glasses, turns out they actually made my sunglasses there. If, as it happened, and they compete worldwide. Essilor, company based in France, biggest fish in that market. Another one is Luxottica, and as I understand it, Essilor bought Luxottica. And Luxottica was the one that made Oakley sell out to them because they were big enough, they Luxottica owned Lenscrafters and Sunglass Hut bunch of other places, they basically said, either we buy you or you go out of business, what do you want? Okay, so this company in Minnesota competes on a world scale. In fact, they are a customer of Essilor, but they also actually do some things that Essilor doesn't do themselves. So they hired somebody, background in lean six sigma. And he started off with five S and he didn't tell them they were doing, he said, we're going to clean this place up. And they picked up the pizza boxes in the parking lot and went from there inside the, inside their plant. And along the way, they said, hey, let's get our people trained up. There we go. And, and what they did in two years, they quadrupled their production capacity. They've improved their level of quality. And the last time I talked to them, they were ready to go again, kind of like cellular division. They were just on the verge of winning a couple of big contracts. Just an amazing story. They did the, the studies, they put in improvements, they reduced extra motion, they reduced waste, they reduced defects. They, they're able to monitor their, their, their production quality, their lenses, much better than they were before. And surprisingly, from the first time I met them, people were there. And surprisingly, from the first time I met them, people were there, you know, and they seemed okay. Next, the last time I saw them, what I want to say is people were busy, people were smiling, people were energetic. Truly interesting, that has been a real change. All right, so Dominican, we see design, measure, analyze, improve and control. And I'm just going to focus on the first one. The first one is we need to define what is it we're trying to accomplish? And why is it important? And, and because we're looking for a commitment of resources, a commitment of activity, even a commitment of culture change perhaps. And we need to clearly define a set, success. As a project manager, I am sure that you would agree, if we don't get the charter done correctly, we don't get that scope statement done correctly. The, the project is in trouble before it even gets out of the starting blocks. So I'm going to call this foundational. And then we go through our process and the, let me mention the last one. This process will get us improvements. I no doubt that if we, if we handle it capably, follow what's in the training, it'll work. Where it often fails is in that last step, control. And there are some, some organizations, sure, I'm going to say short sighted. And this is where you as a project manager have to be very, very strong. What we need to do is now we've got their improvement in place, let's do the monitoring, let's sustain those improvements, keep it going, so we get the benefit. The payback and then ongoingly, after we've already paid it off, we're going to keep getting benefits. And so we're going to do monitoring, ongoing validation, and if necessary, fix it. And of course, we're going to capture all that information, so the idea is we're going to be able to tell you, if you do it all right. What it costs to get this improvement, here's what the benefit of the improvement, here is the payback period. And now ongoing and maybe another iteration, what lean six sigma has done for you. So if we look at the two perspectives, we see lean and eliminating ways, making sure things flow continuously, no. Bottlenecks, policy that, you know, base it on demand rather than on forecast. Don't build a car unless you, unless you can sell it. Classic examples, I'm sure everybody has seen, well, let's go back a few years. There have been times when there's lots of cars sitting on parking lots. It's not good, it's not good for anybody. So, and then easy visual approach, in a work environment, there's a huge amount of information that needs to be understood. Write a memo, send an email, don't think so, make a company announcement, no. So what we look at is how can we communicate the information that needs to be done? Signage, organization, things that are very, very apparent, don't step here while this machine is running. For example, six sigma, focus and eliminate defects. Monitor how well our processes are doing, process yield is percent good. And also realize this, so we've got a five step process and everything is at ninety-eight, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ninety-nine. Seventy, what's your overall? Well, it's not ninety-eight, ninety-nine, it's not even ninety-six. It's probably going to be in the low eighties if that. I've been in the calculation, but this is a real simple calculation that says, okay. Because every time we have less than a hundred percent good, we decline the population, start with a thousand, decline, decline, decline. And we're going to end up with a lower percentage than you might expect. And capable systems, how do we know, how can we document our, our process is capable of producing the quality that we need? So we're going to use a lot of analytical tools and all that statistics. Both are focused on quality and efficiency, both create sustainable results if we play the game the way they say. And what we can do is build on prior efforts, really, really good. So you as a project manager can really benefit, you do good work now, you can do additional good work on top of that. Instead of having to reinvent it. As a project manager, I've gone and reclaimed some improvement area and then it wasn't sustained and we get to retake the same hill, not a good idea. Okay. I've covered some of this, you see the idea of eliminating defects. And one of the ways we're going to do that is reducing variation, in fact, we see the variation is the enemy of quality. Also centering the process and I talked about the statistical, you know, the normal curve. And so we're going to be using graphic tools as well, and you see that in the second bullet point. So what we're going to do for sure is we're going to, as we go through the process, we're going to capture, how are we doing now, baseline? And then as we work toward improvements, we're going to be able to see measurable differences or not. Let's, let's validate whatever results we get. I would expect we're going to see improvements most of the time, maybe not as good as we thought or maybe even better, but let's validate that. And then let's understand what we've achieved and maintain. And if we didn't hit our targets, then let's, let's understand why we didn't. Some of the tools that we use and you see DPMO, which is deep defects per million opportunities, let's go back to the million metal pins. So if I, if I'm interested in metal pins, how, how. What the diameter of that metal pin is and also probably the length. And let's say there's only two characteristics I care about. That means that if I, that means that each pin has two defect opportunities. And so if I make half a million pins, that's a million opportunities for something to go wrong. And so out of that five hundred thousand pins, I'm going to have three point four defects. Maybe all in the same, well, not all the same pin, you're going to get two, maybe in two pins or maybe. A defect here, defect there, so very low defect. Signal level again reflects a quality level, CPCPK reflect capability level and uses of course to back. There's, I already told you what sign is, Greek, Greek symbol for standard deviation. Six sigma is our goal. Pareto charts, Pareto gave a C D twenty rule. Seems like things are always blooming here in Southern California. So, so Pareto charts are going to allow us to focus, laser focus in on what we need to look at. So we find that we're having a problem, how do we start the analysis process? Well, let's go ahead and take in the data, find out where the, the negative events are happening. And use Pareto charts to focus in, focus in, focus in if we need to. And then do a more thorough investigation. That's a relatively simple statistical tool. A technique for efficiently testing multi-variable solutions. And sometimes you can just get a one variable solution, just change this setting or let me just change this material. But quite often it's going to be, let me change this material, let me change the temperature, let me change the dimension. And so what I'm, what I'm going to have to do is kind of find the optimal answer, well, that tool. And I just dropped the name out of my brain, so. I immediately went to DOT, I thought, that's not right, it's not right, it's DOE, design of experiments. So what we're going to do is we're going to have a structured manner of running experiments, after in the results. And based on that, building a mathematical model, so that as we go forward and change those, those variables. We can predict how effective it will be. So what is six sigma discipline really rely on? Quantified information, measured information, data, good data. So of course, we need to have the appropriate data, we need to have, and make sure that it's accurate. Lean concepts, so leans, start off, what's important to customers, what's the value stream workflow? How do we make our products, product flow continuous? How do we only do work when there's a demand? And you see down at the bottom, we want to manage, and they say this, manage toward perfection. So that our resource requirements continually fall, making things more and more, that's a target. So. Graphical, graphical tool that shows how values achieved, answer value stream map. There you go, pretty straightforward book that came out, I think in the mid eighties. And it's called lean, I'm trying to remember, Womack is the, is the author, what are the eight great ways? Okay, think about this, if we have downtime, that's the acronym, defects. That's a waste, overproduction, if we have overproduction, that means we're going to have to store it, another waste. That means we're going to have to manage the inventory, some things will expire, you get the idea, waiting, bottle neck. Non-utilization of talent or, and if we don't, if we don't get the, the, the best that we can from people. And we let that go lay fallow in the field, that's a waste. And not only is it a waste for what they could contribute, but it's also a waste in their own personal lives. And it's also, what you're also going to do is set up a morality on top of other things. He is for expert transportation, so if I make too many things, now I'm going to have to transport them. Build a warehouse, put them in the warehouse, move them out of the warehouse, put them out to the shipping dock. Extra moving around, doesn't do anything to transform the product, it just is an expense, extra inventory for all. And I covered that already, and extra motion, we extra steps. And that could be done by people or could be done by equipment, machines or even computer cycles. And then extra processing, extra processing is when you do more work, it's like, oh, you're going to need to get sixteen authorizations, really? Or you're going to need, everybody's seen that kind of stuff. Or I'm going to design a doghouse, I'm going to go out and take project management and buy a Microsoft project. Really? I don't think so. So let's have the right amount of processing mechanism for establishing a pull system, let's call it unbund. Unbund, unbund is a messaging type of idea, super. Supermarkets, simple, a simple example, if I buy a can of tomato soup. Eventually, there's going to be enough cans of tomato soup, or they're going to say, hey, we need a case of tomato soup. And they're going to be able to fire that up to the warehouse and pause a case of tomato soups to be, to be, to be shipped. And when the warehouse gets enough orders, they'll say, hey, you need to send us a pallet of tomato soup. And they send that back up to the factory and that's going to trigger the production of that case or that pallet of tomato soup. So that we don't have, again, overproducing. And can also be used to communicate, that idea can be used to communicate conditions within visual factory, visual factory. So which supports, it says, workday standard, standardization. There is efficiencies and standardization and flexibility and standardization, say we've got ten workstations. And, and this is kind of a, not a case study, this is an example of company that I work with, I'll mention, I'll show it to you in a little bit. Where they had a number of workstations, they had about ten of them and they were all customized and they were all really inefficient. So they went through, they basically cleaned them out, sorting, straightening, labeled where everything's going to go. Shining, clean off the work surfaces, scrub the floors, clean the lighting, oh, by the way, before you do a five S, take pictures. And chances are at the end of it, you'll stand back and go, did you guys improve the lighting? You put this in a bigger area because it looks nicer, it looks more inviting. Standardizing and that's, and you've got to get the first three before you get to standardizing, set it up the way it's going to work best. For what you're trying to get done. And then if I need to bring in, if I need to move people around or there's a workstation that's not available or I need to bring in a second shift. Boom, everybody's equipped and we don't have too much stuff, we don't have the wrong stuff in there, we have exactly what's right. And then sustaining, part of that actually is making sure that it is, you know, that we measure those activities. We measure the effectiveness and we, there's also some maintenance activities we will do on a periodic basis. And also sustaining, we want to change the culture. And kind of as a passing thought, take a look at the formula, it was on the first slide as well, on second slide. And what you see is on the right hand side, just to the right of the greater than symbol. That's the formula for calculated and average. Often expressed as X bar, where X is the, the actual variable member and we see X sub, sub I is, we're incrementing through the data set. And so you can translate that sign to read be above average. With that, I'd like to invite you to join us, happy to work with you, would love to show you the benefits. Closer inspection, give you a chance to work through this process, learn the disciplines and then receive the benefits of that. Thank you very, very much for your time and that's the basic information that I have for you today.
Awesome, thanks Chris, I'll open it up for questions. If anybody has any questions about lean six sigma, ITIL, how they relate to project management. Any of the topics that were covered by Chris today. As we wait for, for our comments on Facebook and any Zoom questions that people may have. I was wondering, Chris, how you've seen ITIL four kind of change? Does it change any of this presentation or was that already factored into play or the methodology is kind of the same?
It changed, it was before, it showed a very large structure. And the, the way that we would approach the topic from a teaching standpoint, a lot of memorization. Basically, two and a half days of, I'm working in the haze and it comes into focus the last few hours. ITIL four, they simplified it so that they simplified the presentation, less memorization. But real focus on core ideas, which I, I kind of hit on here. And, and then also incorporating newer project management ideas like Agile. Like DevOps, for example, DevOps is where developers are going to work closely with operations. Back in the day when I started in, in software development and also in management, there was kind of that divide. The developers on one side of the house and they do their work and then get it done, get it over with, throw it over the transom and hand it over to operations. And they don't talk, so with DevOps, we bring those two, those two interests together. So what we end up with is we end up with better products that will operate better going forward. And there was always a natural tension. So that and some other more, let's say more holistic ideas as well.